Good evening, everyone. This is the January 22nd meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
(Inaudible)
On that note as well, councilors, the mics will be live the entire evening, so if we could keep any conversation to a minimum. Everyone can hear everything, so it'll disrupt what the viewers can hear at home. Madam Clerk?
Roll call of the members. Councilor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Councilor Keefe?
Here.
Here. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Councilor Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here. Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here. Councilor Powers?
Yeah.
Here. Councilor Rizzo?
Here.
Here. Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here. And Council President Gino?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 8th, 2018?
So moved.
Calendar item number three. Healthy Community Initiatives Office Relative to an Ordinance Relative to Abandoned Bicycles.
So these are public hearings, so at this time we'll start with any proponents. Any proponents?
Julie DeMaro, Revere on the move. Healthy Community Initiatives Office. I am obviously a proponent of this ordinance. This request is to help establish some order and rules and policy for the current bike-sharing program that will be here in the city of Revere, not just for the operator that we contracted, but also for operators that are operating outside of the city of Revere. And then I have looked at other ordinances in other cities that have bike-share systems within place. None of these guides that I've looked at are from Massachusetts, but they're from bigger cities outside of the state. They all have some sort of clause in regards to abandoned bicycles which is similar to the clause that we are trying to propose here tonight. In addition to this ordinance that we are requesting, we'll also be asking the vendor to make sure that the number of bikes out on the street within their fleet is actually meeting rider demand. So if, for example, the ridership is high, they should have enough bikes out on the street to meet that demand, but as well as if the ridership should dip, they have to be able to pull some of those bikes back. And that will also help with this ordinance that we have here, we are proposing tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors wishing to speak?
Madam President.
Councilor Novoselfsky?
Thank you. I have had discussions with Julie on this, and this is, I guess, mainly for the commercial bicycles companies that we are looking for to come into the city. If it was for regular bikes, you know, that kids have, I would have some kind of a problem with it because it's hard to know who they belong to because bikes are not registered. So I'd like, you know, want to look at this in committee?
Of course.
You know, afterwards and get a little more detail and clarification on it. Thank you.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? This will be referred to the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee.
Calendar item number four. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Baystone Revere LLC, 540 Revere Beach Boulevard, seeking permission to install a standing accessory sign at 540 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Madam Clerk, any proponents?
My name is Roy McDowell, representing Baystone Revere LLC, where the developers of the project called Beach House at 540 Revere Beach Boulevard. We're here this evening to request permission to put in a very, we consider a very tasteful glass sign. The sign is six feet long and it's about 40 inches high. It's very small, very unobtrusive, but I think it would look very tasteful in front of the building. I believe we have submitted some renderings of that sign.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? So we'll close the hearing and we'll open up to councilors for questions afterwards.
Thank you.
So that closes up. Proponents? Any proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Anyone opposing? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. City councilors? Any city councilors? Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. This sign is located down on the boulevard. I believe it's 540 Revere Beach Boulevard. It's adjacent to Seaview Towers. Initially, I had several calls from residents down there at Seaview Towers, and the calls were negative, opposed to the sign. And subsequently, I think that the, we probably put a set of plans down with Carol Fisher in the office down there, and we invited residents of the building to come down and look at the sign, which they did. Several of those people I've talked to that were originally against the sign, I think they were misinformed, they felt that it was a billboard of some sort. It's, they've since, as far as I know, changed their opinion. I think it's a very, to use a word that the, Mr. McDowell just used, a very tasteful sign. Anyone that, we all have pictures of it before us and dimensional specifications. I think that anyone looking at that sign would feel that it is certainly a plus, not only for the development, but also for the city of Revere. It sends a message out there that good things are happening in this city, just that sign itself. You go to any of the more affluent communities throughout the Commonwealth that have this type of development, and you'll find similar signage. In fact, I was coming through Sargus last evening, and I saw a sign at one of the developments there, and this sign, that sign was not only nice and attractive, but this sign far exceeds that. It's six feet wide.
Do you?
When I say wide, I'm talking about, actually, I should say length, which is probably, I don't know, the height of any one of us, as far as horizontally. Vertically, it's probably a little about waist-high. It's grass. The only verbiage on that sign are the word "beach house" and the picture of a seashell. It is illuminated in a very, again, a very tasteful way. As far as I'm concerned, I am supporting this. I would hope my colleagues would also. It sends a very pleasant message to the voters and the residents of this city that we're doing things in the right manner here. And once again, I would hope the council would support this. It's a very positive thing for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Any other councilors that wish to speak on this? Councilor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. It's certainly no surprise that anyone in the community, anywhere, traveling by the site, they see some structure going up. To have a six-foot sign there just stating the name with a seashell, it really is, you shouldn't take anybody back a bit. To me, it's, I think, again, it adds to the flavor of the construction that's going on there, and certainly our community is, as Councilor Powers stated, would be enhanced based on the fact that it's done throughout all the other development areas throughout the Commonwealth, so I don't see any reason for this being in that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Powers showed me a picture of the sign. It was done in very good taste. It's going to have no problem with the navies there, so I will be supporting the wide council on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Councilor's going once? All right, this will be referred to the zoning Subcommittee.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Tabernaculo Evangelico, a religious facility, formerly MT Carmel Church Assembly of God, a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation, 957 Broadway, requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere as follows. Parcel located at 14 Hutchinson Street, they're requesting that it be changed from residential B District to the general business district.
Any proponents here this evening?
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam President, and members of the City Council. My name is Attorney Lawrence Semione, Law Office at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I represent Tabernaculo Evangelico of 957 Broadway, Revere, who had acquired this property recently and would like to use it for off-street parking. I'm going to ask for a continuance, Madam President, because I have ongoing discussions with the building inspector who has, is considering the Dover Amendment and its consequences on this request, and it may be able to be resolved without this body having to act. With that said, most respectfully ask you for a continuance of one month so that I can work it out with the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak on this this evening? Any proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Anyone opposed to this public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors wishing to speak? Any councilors seeing and hearing none? This will be referred to the zoning Subcommittee where it will be further discussed after the attorney reviews the information.
Calendar item number six. The McClellan Highway Development Company LLC, care of HYM Investment Group LLC, will conduct an introductory briefing for the City Council relative to its zoning ordinance and zoning map amendment request for the Suffolk Downs overlay district.
So while they're getting ready to come up, I just want to remind everyone on the council that, again, these are live mics. They will be on, recording the entire meeting, so please keep any conversation to a minimum as the people at home will hear both their presentation as well as our conversation. And keep in mind to the presenters that these microphones are not projecting, so we have to project our voices as there's no other forms of intercoms in the council chamber tonight.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President. Congratulations on your election. Happy to be here again in the new year. Welcome, or hello to all the councilors and some of the new folks on the council. We're really pleased to be back here to make a presentation. I'm told that there was a technical problem on the broadcast of our presentation on the screen, but I think, did we print it out, or is this, or how are we, is it?
That's happened.
Okay, okay. So I have the version in front of me on a laptop, so I can kind of run through it, but I just wanted to make sure that I'll call out when I'm turning the page so you can kind of follow along with me if that's okay. I apologize. We typically do it on the screen so that people can see it. And I think, too, we can make sure, Madam President, that we'll make it available to you folks so that you can post it on the city's website?
Absolutely.
So that it's available to members of the public who cannot see it tonight, if that's okay.
Absolutely. If you could forward it to the city clerk, that would be fantastic.
We will make sure that that happens.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so again, my name is Tom O'Brien, and I'm the part of a company called the HYM Investment Group. I'm joined here by Doug Mans, who's my partner, Dino DeFranzo, who I work with quite a bit, helps me a lot on community engagement issues and things like that. I think you all know us quite well. We've all spent a fair amount of time together on this project. Today is a big day for us, a really exciting day for us. As you know, just last week, we filed our zoning petition before the city to try and move forward with the potential redevelopment of Suffolk Downs, and this presentation is meant to kind of bring you up to speed on both that petition as well as some of the other things that we've been working on. So let me kind of run through if I can. I'm going to go through it as quickly as I can. So I'm moving to the first page, you know, in. This is just, this is a screen that you, I think, have seen before. This is a very important redevelopment. It's an important redevelopment certainly for Revere. It's a redevelopment that is important for East Boston. It's an important redevelopment frankly for the whole region. So we assembled a really important team, a great team filled with talented individuals. So this is CBT is our master planner architect. STAS is our landscape architect. Our retail architect is Preloach Chalinski. VHB is our permitting and traffic consultant, and Beals &amp; Thomas is our civil engineer. AARP is our sustainability consultant. So we've got a really world-class team here, ready to move forward and continue to work with us all as we redevelop this site. Just to orient you, I'm on the third page in. Just to orient you to the site itself, you can see that there's a map there that kind of shows where the site sits, and we're just off of Revere Beach Parkway. We've got two blue line stops, as people well know, Beachmont and Suffolk Downs, as well as, you know, right at the base of Orient Heights. So we think of this site as being proximate to downtown Boston, certainly connected by the blue line, but also to, close by a number of different natural assets that are terrific from Belle Isle Marsh to Revere Beach to Constitution Beach in East Boston. And the opportunity and the challenge frankly is to make connections across the board on all those places. So if I go to the next page, then there's a red kind of shading that shows you the specific part of the site that is located in Revere. So approximately 40% of the site is located in the city of Revere. The remaining 60% is in the city of East Boston, and I think you folks have known that well. What is our vision? So just to remind folks, what is our redevelopment vision? I'm on the next page, which has six circles on it. Our first and most important task is to make this a mixed-use walkable neighborhood. That is the absolute most important thing for us. We want to make it a place where people want to shop, where people want to work, where people want to eat a meal, great restaurants and things like that, and a place as well where people will live. So it's got to be a mixed-use walkable neighborhood. In part, in order to do that, as I move over to the next circle on the top row in the middle, we need to create great open space and parks. So as we've said before in this forum and me from this podium, we've dedicated 25%, fully 25% of the site to open space and parks, so 40 acres across the entire site will be dedicated to open space and parks. And then as you move across to the right-hand side on that top row, we also want to create neighborhood retail. That's kind of the fundamental part of making this a mixed-use site. Neighborhood retail means restaurants, shops, not big-box retail like a Target store or the like. If we set the table well with those first three circles on the top, then we can do the next piece, which is to make sure that we make this a place where economic development can happen, jobs can get created. If we make it a place where people live and want to shop, it can be then a place where people will want to work, where companies will go. We'll talk about Amazon in a second. And so those last two pieces are just as important. So the transit-oriented development, making sure that we make use of the blue line stations that are there, and resiliency and sustainability. This is a site that obviously is a coastal site, and we've established a plan to make sure that we handle the resiliency needs and the sustainability needs to make sure that this site can last in the long term. I'll talk about that as well. So here's a graphic, I'm on the, I think it's the fifth page now, of the proposed master plan. It's titled "Proposed Master Plan," which gives you a sense of what we're thinking about, and the big stretch of open space that runs through the middle of it that gives us a chance to do all kinds of things with that open space, which, again, we'll talk about, a little bit more about in a moment. The next piece is a master plan that kind of gives you the flattened portion of where the buildings will be located, and a sense of how the street grid lays out, and as well how, you know, what the border is between, that's the dotted line that runs in the middle of it there, the border between Revere and Boston. As I go to the next piece, this gives you a little bit of a sense of the 40-acre open space network, and again, this is a little deficient in terms of not being able to be on the screen to point this out, but you can see that the acreage together, the large piece, the 15-acre Central Common, together with all the other open space across the entire site, you know, spread evenly across the site, across between Revere and Boston, as well as the concept of creating complete streets, the idea of there being a green spine, places for people to exercise, there will be a 1.5-mile exercise trail that will run through the whole site. All those pieces will be part of the open space network as we think it through. And obviously, on this next slide, open space and parks. Each of the parks will have a variety of different types of character associated with them. Some will be active, they could be playing fields. Some will be more passive. There'll be dog parks, all kinds of things like that. I'm on to the next page, which is the landscaped amphitheater. So this is a piece that's located in Revere. It's hard for me to go back and forth between the site, but it's located in Revere to kind of give you a sense of it. This is a good example of a park that will serve double duty for us. So for 99% of the time, this park will be, just as it appears on this picture, as a landscaped amphitheater. But we are heading into a time, obviously, in the next 100 years, where the flood maps have already started to change. And so we anticipate that a site like this will have some water events over the next, however many, 100 years or so. Those flood maps, as they become amended, mean that we need to be sure that we have places to store the water and then help the water move out after the flood events. So this is a site, for example, that can hold water in the event of a sandy-like storm or something else that will come our way, and then as the tide goes back out the next day, the water will flow out. So it gives us a chance to use this both as the open space that it is for, as I say, 99% of the time, and then on those rare occasions when we do get floods over the next 100 years, we will have set up the site to be able to manage that as we go forward. I have, the next slide is a conceptual retail plan. The red on this slide is, are the locations of the retail. So this gives you a sense of us, as we've said previously, we want these two blue line stations, both the Beachmont Station and the Suffolk Downs Station, to become our front doors, and so those pieces end up being kind of retail squares themselves. Those are central points where we want people to find themselves, you know, going to, again, have a meal or to shop. But then we want to connect those pieces to one another throughout the site with a main street that runs all the way through the site from Suffolk Downs T-Station to Beachmont and from Beachmont back to Suffolk Downs. This gives us a chance to create a strolling area for people and for folks to understand, you know, that the site has plenty of room for folks to connect to both stations. As I said, the neighborhood retail is our focus here. This is not a place for a Target store, for, you know, for large retail pieces, but instead to have smaller, more interesting shops, great places, again, for people to grab a meal with lots of outdoor seating, lots of activation of the street. The next piece I have is a drawing that shows what we call Belle Isle Square. So this is the new square that we would create near the Suffolk Downs T-Stop. We call it Belle Isle Square because there is no name for it today, obviously. It's called the Suffolk Downs T-Stop, but relatively soon Suffolk Downs will cease to be the traditional place that we've always thought about it as, and so we've instituted the name of Belle Isle Square. So far, in particular, in our work in East Boston, people have kind of embraced this as a name that they're comfortable with. Obviously, not done yet, but it's sort of an interesting name that is a placeholder for us for right now. The land use plan, as we move ourselves now into Revere, the land use plan, I'm on the next slide after that, a minimum of 50% of the buildings will be dedicated to commercial use. So a minimum of 50% of the square footage will be dedicated to commercial use. This is one of the basic principles that I think we've talked about since we first met with one another, you know, combined with the 25% of the site that would be dedicated to open space, as well as a minimum of the site will be subjected to commercial use. We spent a lot of time with the mayor and with his staff as we went through this process, and with all of you, and so we, you know, take seriously the basic principles that we've put together to make sure that that all lays out well for you folks. So again, that's the commercial use piece of this. And then the next is, we have a slide that kind of gives a graphic or a picture of what the Beachmont Square section will look like, and for that, we have in there an innovation center, we call it. So this is an opportunity, we hope, to create commercial opportunities that would come from the gathering of entrepreneurs and folks who would be thinking about starting new companies and the like. So we want to create an innovation center in the heart of Beachmont Square, an innovation center that would, again, attract people, help them think about how they could start new buildings, think about how they could fund buildings. This, we want to be a place that can create jobs and a place that will produce a significant amount of commercial benefit. So we see this as a really important part of this, this Innovation Square building. It's not a building that we see as a huge, you know, economic benefit necessarily early days to us, but we see it as something that sets the table for the city, that sets the table for all of us as we try and make this a commercially successful site. So that leads into the process of creating economic development opportunities on the site. These are job opportunities, these are opportunities to attract companies to the site, and that's really what we're focused on, is to set the table for that as we move down. So the next piece of this is, I'm at now the slide that says "Proposed Suffolk Downs Overlay District." So I'm going to run through those slides next. So again, to remind people, the next slide after that is the red overlay, the red shading that kind of shows the Revere portion of the site, and so the overlay district would take up all of that Revere portion of the site, so all of that is part of it. The entire Revere portion is in the overlay district. So the key metrics for what we filed have been, we filed a document that would discuss the proposed uses for the site. As I said, the principal uses are commercial-related, retail-related, residential-related, I'm going to go through these in a minute, but those are the basic uses as we've laid them out. And then in addition to that, the proposed FAR for the site, again, I think I'll talk about that in a moment as well, and then making sure that we've dedicated that 50% of the space that is built is dedicated to commercial uses, and that 25% of the land space is dedicated to open space. We also proposed heights and setbacks for the overlay district, as well as the possibility of there being a PUD master plan requirement. So for us to move forward, we would then, our next step, file a PUD or master plan, which we hopefully file shortly after completion of this zoning process with you. So the allowed uses, this is the next slide after that, again, this is a mixed-use development, so what we've proposed would be that there would be allowed uses of office, lab, retail, hotel, and residential. Those are the key pieces for us, which, again, we've talked about, I think, since the first days that we've met one another. Nothing new there, I think. On the next slide, we put in the FAA height map, so to just give you a sense of how the FAA height map kind of affects the site, these are heights that are dictated by the FAA, and our buildings cannot be any higher than the heights that are here. So, but what you can see is, the heights also stretch back a little bit from the landing zone close to Logan Airport, so the heights are relatively higher in Revere than they are as you get closer to the Suffolk Downs T-Stop. But what's interesting about that for us is, it gives us a great chance then to make this the commercial zone that I think the city and its leadership have envisioned here, so it gives us a chance to add some height around commercial buildings as well in the Revere portion of the site. So the next slide is a Revere Proposed Height Zone Map. So this is a map that is part of the zoning proposal that we made last week, and I just want to make sure that folks kind of understand what they're looking at here. So you can see as we, as I work from the kind of the Boston border back, there are heights here that range between 170 feet, 175 feet, 180 feet, that are closer to, you know, that piece, the central part of the site. As we stretch away from the Logan Airport, as we stretch further, you know, down the FAA height map, then in the furthest corner of the site, closer to Winter Ave, the heights can be 200 feet. And then as we work our way over toward the Beachmont Station side of it, what we've also tried to do is work our way through to create a buffer zone there so that the buildings themselves would be set back from Washburn Ave and from that stretch along Beachmont Ave. So as you can see, there are at least kind of what we would call two shelves of a step-back. So first, there's a 30-foot buffer between the edges of the building and the beginnings of homes, the back property lines, I guess, would be of those homes on Washburn Ave, and then from there, there would be a 50-foot height, so something more in line, I think, with some of the single-family homes that are there. Then stepping back a little bit further than that, then there could be, you're stepping up to about 100 feet height, and then the back of the buildings themselves would be 150 feet furthest away from those homes. And that kind of creates a wedding cake effect that hopefully steps the buildings back from Washburn Ave. We spent a great deal of time with the mayor, with Frank Stringi, with Bob O'Brien, to kind of review these things, and that team was very strong with us in terms of the residential character of Washburn Ave and trying to think through how we could step these buildings back a little bit to still achieve the idea of the square footage that we think is warranted to bring the activity that we need to the site, but also making sure that the Beachmont neighborhood and the neighborhood generally feels good about the wedding cake step-back that we've got there. So this gives you kind of an aerial rendering of the next piece of the next slide of it. It gives you a little bit of an aerial rendering of how some of these buildings might lay out. Some of this is kind of in process as we've completed the kind of the wedding cake design, so not all of this kind of matches up with the exact aerial rendering. Some of these aerials take a little bit longer to put together, but we continue to work this through and help it evolve so that people can understand what it will look like when completed. And I think that's it. And I don't know if the mayor speaks next, or if I answer questions first, or how that works, Council President.
We can invite any presenters, so we'll invite the mayor, and then we'll invite anyone for questions.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, members of the council. Obviously, I stand up here tonight pretty humbled by the opportunity that we have as a community, and I rise, obviously... And I rise, obviously, in support of this overlay district that we have proposed to the council. And I just want to touch on a couple of things. One is the quality of the developer that we have before us. HYM not only has an incredible track record, but the fact that they've been such a great community partner in such a short amount of time, they've proven that. And I think the council, from what one would agree, and all of you would agree, but even with the smallest thing, in terms of helping out with snow removal, and we had seventeen, eighteen inches on January fourth, and when I picked up the phone to call out and reach out to HYM, they were more than willing to help us with snow removal efforts and take their spaces as one that we could use. If, even in terms of allowing staging for work to be done, that's going to be done on Winthrop Ave, they've been more than accommodating in terms of that. So when we look and we're coming on the heels of the Mass Municipal Association's meeting, the annual meeting, and I get an opportunity to meet with a lot of my colleagues in other communities, and the fact that we have such a high-quality developer before us speaks volumes for the opportunity that we have as a community. And they really are the definition of a top-notch, world-class developer. With all that said, there are a number of things that I'm sure we'll have more conversation about in terms of the specifics of the overlay district. I look forward to those conversations. As Mr. O'Brien mentioned, we did push hard for the fifty-fifty split in terms of residential and commercial. And in fact, it wasn't noted earlier, but we will have included in that PUD process, a Planned Unit Development Process, is a project review committee, and that's by city ordinance. And we will also have, I will have, a project advisory group that will shepherd the community process. So there is community input into this project. The final thing that I'll say is that this is a transformational opportunity for the city of Revere. Last week, we heard news of Amazon, the not-so-short list of twenty. But to put it in perspective, I think it's important to step back, think about the fact that, you know, a year and a half ago, we were talking about Slot Parlor being a couple of hundred yards away from that site. And now we're staring down the barrel of being on a shortlist, one of twenty proposals in all of North America. And I think that is truly a humbling fact when you think about where we are right now in terms of being a community. And what we face right now and what's unfolding before our eyes is going to shape our success over the next twenty, thirty, fifty years. So it is, it is an incredible site. There is incredible opportunity for that site. I've said time and time again, Amazon will not find a better location, two MBTA stops close to International Airport on public transportation, and a hundred and sixty-one acres under one ownership and a top-notch, world-class developer like HYM. So I look forward to the ongoing conversations and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just for everyone's information, this application for the zoning change was filed on January eighteenth, and this will be coming before the City Council for a public hearing on February twenty-sixth. So this is just a communication from the developer, letting us know what's happening, what the vision is for the site, but this will be coming to a public hearing on February twenty-sixth. At this time, if there are no more presenters, I'll open it up to the City Council. Councilors that have questions? Councilor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Mr. O'Brien. I just have two questions to help clarify something for me, have a better understanding of the geography, shall I say, the topography. How big is the amphitheater in acreage?
I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I'm sorry, I don't have that at my fingertips tonight.
And the other question I'd like to know is, within that area, what is the elevation? Is it within marshland? Is it not marshland? Is it within the track area?
Can I get back to you on that one too?
Of course.
Yeah, so can I just give you a little sense of it?
Of course.
The basic idea behind the site, though, the, what we're attempting to do here is to use some of the existing elevations as the places where water may gather in the future. So that particular elevation is attractive because there is water there today, okay? So what we'll do is we'll bring in clean fill, clean dirt, that will raise the sites on which we will build the roads and the buildings, in as many of the portions of the site as we can, except for the edges of the site, particularly around Beauchamp, because what ends up happening is, as the flood map changes, then you need to add approximately forty inches or so of fill across the site to lift it up out of the floodplain. So then we will become what's called a shelter-in-place site. It sounds kind of technical, but that essentially means that people in those buildings will not have to evacuate in the instance of a flood. The key pieces of the building itself, the electrical systems and things like that, will be up out of the water. The buildings themselves will not be subject to flooding, you know, will be up above it. But what will end up happening is the open space pieces will be, you know, forty inches or so below that. That's where the water will gather. And as the tide goes out, the water will go out, you know, six hours later or whenever the tide goes.
Right. The reason why I ask you is when I look at the topography over at Young's Hill, which is basically Campbell Avenue, the elevation is just about eighty feet.
Yes.
Then over at Beauchamp, it's of a similar elevation, so you're basically in a gully and considering the water and the topography in there. That's why my question was, obviously, that's why I assume you're going to put the mechanics on top of everything.
And I can assure you, Counsel, we've planned through this, you know, part of the reason why I showed you that team, my apologies, I'm not prepared for that detail of the question, but we have a team of people who've been working on these issues since the moment we bought the site and before, frankly. So we've thought carefully about what that elevation will be of the buildings, specifically what the resulting elevation will be of the green space, and how exactly the water flow will work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rotundo. Counsel Nocelski?
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, in general, you know, I think it's a great, great project, and it's a great thing for Revere. They do have some issues along Winthrop Ave, you know, across the street from where my ward begins, and the height limits from Washington, from Winthrop Ave back, you know, within three hundred feet of Winthrop Ave, you have single-family homes in between, you have six-story apartment buildings, no hotel going up, six stories. And, you know, I just think that the amount of height along Winthrop Ave is just too close to Winthrop Ave. You know, I think if we brought it back another hundred feet or so, and I'm not saying down to zero, but, you know, through the step-up that you use the wedding cake, there's two sides of the wedding cake, actually, it's round.
Yes.
And, you know, and this is only showing one side of it. So, you know, I think we ought to look at the other side and try and work on the buffer zones, even from Winthrop Ave.
Yes.
And the height of the beginning buildings from Winthrop Ave's setback. So, you know, I look forward to working with you on that.
Yep, we look forward to working with you on those as well, Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Can you pass the mic closer to McKenna?
Sorry. She don't have a mic. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I was just wondering, we talked about phases, and we talked about starting in Beauchamp first, and then in some degree, it got pushed to face in Suffolk Downs. I was just wondering if we made a decision and it was going to be starting in Beauchamp first?
I think what we would say on that is, you know, we're waiting for the Amazon decision, as the mayor said, which we're just as pleased as you are, I think, that we're at the, you know, at the next stage, we got invited back to the next stage. We did advance the design of a building that Amazon could use at Suffolk Downs Station, and we're in the middle of that process to advance the design of that and hopefully receive the final approval of that for the schematic design of that building in the city of Boston. If we don't hear from Amazon, or if Amazon says no, our original plan, Counselor, is we think the Beauchamp side is a logical place to begin, because as you know, I mean, as well or better than anybody, as soon as we take that fence down, as soon as we take those horse barns down, that site opens right up and it's a terrific area in which to begin. So I think that's, you know, that's still the basic plan. I don't, I can't say specifically that's it right now as we sit here, just we've been doing a ton of work on all these different fronts, but I think still we look at and say that it seems certainly logical, that's for sure.
Well, I hope that happens.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, I just wanted to know, is this specific date that Amazon said that they would get back to you? And if they don't get back to you, when do you guys think you're going to start the project? I know you're going to start with or without Amazon, so.
If we take Amazon out of the equation.
Sure.
Our plan is to try and finish this process with you, the, both the zoning process as well as the PUD process, if we can, this spring or early summer. If we can do that with you, then that allows us, the development of that group of buildings, leaving, again, leaving Amazon off, and remember, Counsel, one of the things that we talked about is, you know, we don't want to just build one lonely building at Beauchamp. We think to make this a community, you need to build four or five buildings to make it a place where people can actually, you know, put the retail in place, build that innovation center, all those pieces that, you know, that we've talked about. That sets the table for the next phases. So in order for us to do that, we need to take a team and start the process of pushing forward the design of those buildings. That's a process that takes, you know, nine months at least, I think. So I would say if we could start by the first quarter, you know, sort of the winter of eighteen, nineteen, first quarter of nineteen, that's where we'd want to start.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Once we're at approval stage with you, we want to get in the ground as fast as we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel McKenna. Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. O'Brien, looking at the, just the Revere site, the Revere acreage of the one hundred and sixty, seven hundred and sixty-one acres.
It's approximately fifty-seven acres in Revere.
Fifty-seven acres in Revere.
Fifty-two.
So is it?
Fifty-two, sorry, fifty-two acres.
Fair to assume that the, probably fifteen of those acres would be the open space portion for Revere?
Yes.
The area that would be more or less prone to flooding?
Some of it's already prone to flooding today. So a good part of it is already Sales Creek. That's kind of what I was suggesting to Counsel Rotundo, and we'd be happy to come back and do a specific presentation on the climate change-related issues here. But essentially, what we're saying is, is the site today is potentially subject to flooding in any event, where Sales Creek, you know, cuts through. So, and it's really not legally possible for us to do a lot to disrupt what Sales Creek is today, just given the fact that it's an important wetland treasure. So, but what is possible for us is, is to make sure that that does become a place where the water can collect and then goes back out. So remember, at the base of Sales Creek, there's a pump house that's there. And that pump house, it allows water to simply go out, not saltwater coming in. So fresh water from the Revere side goes out when the tide goes out. Saltwater cannot come back in because the gates close on that. In the instance of storm events, the pump kind of kicks in to make sure that they, that that can stay ahead of the water that's coming out of Revere. So what we, what we essentially have been working on is, is just to use that existing natural process so that when the flooding does occur, that same process will work and the water will go right off the site, you know, out into the ocean.
Now, the balance of the land in Revere, we're talking probably, what, twenty-two acres of commercial, hotel, et cetera?
Yeah, I don't have that exactly on my head, but it sounds enough.
Probably about twenty-two acres, just round figures.
Round figures.
Okay. Of the each, the acreage that's for the residential and the acres, acreage that's used for the commercial, we're talking about the base foot print, am I correct?
Of the acreage or of the, so what we're saying, when we say fifty-fifty, what we're saying is the actual built, the vertical square footage. So the vertical square footage of the buildings, if you take all that and add that up, fifty percent of it will be related to commercial uses and fifty percent of it will be related to residential.
That's what I was looking to hear.
Yes. Yeah, so that wouldn't be, so it's a little bit, I understand what you're saying, that we're kind of mixing a little bit apples and oranges here, because the open space is measured on land area, that's correct, but the commercial space is measured on vertical built area.
Yeah, as would the residential, too.
As would the residential, yes.
So what I'm saying is the floor space, space in each of those areas would be equal.
Correct. That's correct, yeah. Now, in the commercial space, remember, the definition of that is office, lab, retail, and hotel, all those things. Which produces a good tax basis.
Let me just ask you one more question, if I may, I know everybody else has things they want to ask, and this will be going to zoning. The first phase of the properties that would be built in Revere, I would imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, that they would basically be, have to be residential to support whatever commercial would be coming in there, whether it be retail or restaurants or shops, et cetera.
Yes, that's correct, Counsel. I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you very much.
Would I be correct in assuming that a hotel would also be upfront with regard to the time schedule?
Yes, I think that could work, Counsel. I appreciate you bringing that up, actually, because I want to be clear on these issues. As we've all gotten to know one another, hopefully you understand that, you know, one of the most important things for us is we, I think I've said to you before, if you ask us an answer, you're always, I mean, if you ask us a question, you're always going to get an answer, whether or not it's an answer that's popular or happy or whatever, it's always going to be an answer. But that is correct. In the early stages, what's important here is to create a sense that people would live here. Obviously, if you think about Suffolk Downs, nobody has lived on this site ever, right? It's been a horse track for eighty years, and before that, it was just open, right? So we need to make it a place where people will live. That's been, this Amazon thing has kind of, has taken things a little bit out of order, but if we can make it a place where people will live, if we can make it a place where people will shop, great restaurants, all we need, if you think about it, we need four or five really great restaurants, a coffee shop, the innovation center, really, you know, interesting hotel, and the residential, then I think we can compete for, if it's not Amazon, then somebody else, another company. And we're, we're in this to compete for a next great company. I don't know if you saw, last week, Apple said that they were, you know, they were out there thinking about another headquarters. We're, we're in there to compete for any of these companies, that's for sure.
So I guess the point I'm trying to make, so there'll be no surprises down the road for anyone, is that there has to be residential upfront to support the commercial, the restaurants, the shops, and whatever, and also a hotel that would support those different entities.
That's correct. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel. And again, I'll just clarify, this is a communication, this will be coming before the council as a public hearing on February twenty-sixth. Counsel Iriza?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you for just clarifying the fact that this isn't a public hearing. This will actually be going to a public hearing sometime in February. Well, first, Tom, let me congratulate you for making the shortlist, you and your team. It was a tremendous application. I had the chance to read it, all hundred and nine pages, but it really, it really showed the city of Boston and the city of Revere in a very positive light, and it's a real testament to the professionalism that you and your firm bring to this, bring to this application. I suppose I should also congratulate your brother on grooming Mike Vrabel, who's now the new head coach of the Tennessee Titans.
We're going to have to find a new defensive coordinator, I'm sure he'll figure that out, yeah.
Well, you know, I know he mentioned his name a couple of times today when he was being announced as the head coach, so hats off to him as well.
Thank you.
So I've heard a couple of things here, and you and I have had a conversation in passing from time to time about my concern about residential development. And it's a very valid concern. It's a concern that many people across the city have. And it's kind of a little interesting to me to hear some people talking about, well, you know, so you've got to have residential to bring commercial. It's kind of a newfound philosophy, it seems, by some, to attract commercial by supporting residential. My concern is not with you and your firm at all, but back in the early two thousands, when Roseland Development was developing a significantly large, not, obviously not as large as the Suffolk Downs site, but they had proposed a mixed-use development up in North Revere. And the problem with that is, we never got mixed use. We got one hundred percent residential, and we were able to squeeze a half a fire station out of them, that we worked with Malden on, and we got one bay for Revere and one bay for Malden. So I've always been just a little bit skeptical when it comes to, oh, we're going to have the residential, but it's going to be mixed use and we're going to bring the commercial. Of course, we want commercial development. The city screams for commercial development, and I know, you know, for a long time, we've been promoting the city as a good place to invest in for that very use, for any, for all the uses that you had laid out here in this presentation, but for the last one that was residential. You had a lot of nice uses that were there, lab, office, retail, you know, all that stuff. That's all, you know, like, that's all great stuff. And I think we all understand and know that a hundred and And I think we all understand and know that a hundred and sixty-acre site that is shared between Boston and Revere, something's going to go there. It's not going to be a golf course and it's not going to be a big dog park. It's, there's going to be significant development there, and I think we're all pretty aware of that. But I think as we go forward, personally, and I don't know, this is something we can talk about, but I would like to have something, whether in the form of a host community agreement or something along those lines, that we can be assured that we will get our share of commercial development at that site. And, you know, and again, it's nothing, it, this is not anything to do with you and your firm because clearly you're highly respected, and I think the city is lucky to have a developer, your caliper, and your team that you've assembled here to go forward on this project. It's just to protect the interests of the residents because right now, as I go around the city, I mean, I've heard people even on this council say it takes them thirty minutes to get up to Broadway from Revere Beach and all this. You know, we need to understand what we're going into here, how we're going to address the infrastructure needs, whether it's water, sewer, traffic, public safety, you know, we talked about, you know, some sort of flood protection and things like that. So we have to, you know, as much as I am and have always been very interested in growing the city and making Revere a world-class city, we have to understand that we've got to protect the residents that live here already. And that's very, very important to me. So I'm looking forward to the public hearing, I'm looking forward to the subsequent conversations that we're going to have, you know, pertaining to, you know, zoning subcommittees and so on. But I just think that, you know, I just think that the city, I know personally, you know, I feel more comfortable, if we had a little something and a agreement that said that we're just not going to get all these residential buildings and over in Boston, we're going to get, you know, I mean, and I, and you know what, I take you at face value that that's not going to be the case. You said whatever, it's going to be equally divided and, 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 you know, I, I take that as one hundred percent. I just think that, you know, after, after I leave and some of these other counselors leave and, you know, you know, the mayor leaves, whatever, that we have some protection as a community that, you know, that this development will go the way that the city of Revere wants it. Not by the way of what we had to experience with Roseland Development when we were promised hotel, we were promised retail, and all we have up there now is apartment buildings. And, you know, we didn't have protection then. And so I just, you know, would like to see if that's something you'd be willing to, will open to have conversation about, you know, so that we just have some security there. And everything else, the, all the other questions I have, Madam President, I'll wait until after the public hearing and probably, quite honestly, into it goes into a zoning subcommittee because I know these gentlemen are, are busy and, and I don't want to tie them up with, you know, questions that I could get, you know, in a different forum. So I appreciate it, Madam President.
May I add two thoughts, just?
Sure.
So Counselor, so thank you. Could I give just kind of one global, sort of what's happening in the business world thought on this and just kind of, so you'll, you'll get a sense of our thinking in this regard? So the way I, I think about this is, you know, from twenty-five years or so or thirty years of, of doing this business, when I, when I first started off in this business, the company, the kinds of companies that we would want to attract here, like an Amazon, like an Apple, like a, you know, whatever, those companies only went to a couple of very specific places in our region, right? So they, so the, this, you know, this, this Amazon process only would have happened years ago in Kendall Square, Cambridge, or Apple only would have gone to Kendall Square, Cambridge, or the financial services companies, the State Streets of the world and people like that, they would only go to downtown Boston. Nobody foresaw a time that State Street would build a big, beautiful, brand-new building in South Boston right near Broadway Station, or that we would build an office building, which we have in, in Brighton, and that would attract the Life Science Company, which is just happened, right? So what's happened is, companies suddenly are, are expanding the boundaries of where they might be located. And we're watching it, we're part of it, as we, as we go, go through this. And when we spend time with these companies and we ask them why that is, what they look at us and they say, it's less about the bricks and mortar, it's way more about competing for the talent. They're trying to, they're in a fight every day to get these young people to come work for them. That's really what they're trying to do. And at the end of the day, what they're trying to do is go to interesting, new interesting places, oftentimes with their restaurants, where there's a, you know, an interesting scene or whatever, where those people want to live. And so we think we have a fighting chance. Remember, just as the mayor said, you know, it wasn't too long ago, that I don't think anybody ever would have thought that we could attract a place like, a company like Amazon to a place like Suffolk Downs. So, but what we're trying to do is set the table for it. So the Amazon thing is kind of, is great, but it's a little bit like a lottery ticket. You know, it's a, it's a pretty good lottery ticket and, you know, it's not bad, but it's, but it, you know, who knows how it's all going to play out. But what we do need to do is do the good, solid spade work of, you know, putting, putting the time in, making sure this place becomes a place, and then when that happens, then the people who go to live there will say, you know, I like living here, I could work here, and then we'll get those companies. That's what we think. And we're in, you know, we, we worked with the mayor's office to try and think this through. The mayor's office, by the way, together with Mayor Walsh's office, you know, we, we were just, we were like the, the pens with their, their hands on it, putting this, the Amazon book together at the end of the day. So, so it was a really great team effort to put that together. But I, you know, I would say, we're happy to think through whatever you would like. We think the PUD document will, will make it, you know, will dedicate us to the fifty percent, but we're, we'll sit with you to, to think through what other, you know, documents or assurances or whatever it is you need from us, that's our intention.
Thank you very much, Tom. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And again, I will reiterate, this is the beginning of a very lengthy discussion that will take place between the City Council and HYM. You know, this is going to be going to the public hearing and then a project of this size will absolutely go to committee and will be discussed in depth in committee. Counselor Zamburro?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Tom, for your presentation. I know people are tired of hearing me say how thrilled I am to have your group.
I'm not going to get tired of that, Counselor.
Purchase Suffolk Downs. Anybody that knows anything about development knows that we've landed a premier developer for that site, and, and I'm thrilled with that. I was intrigued to hear about this Belle Isle Square since I'm a member of the Belle Isle Rotary Club. And so is the city clerk. That's East Boston, Revere, and Winter. So that's where, that's where it sits. So I hope that, I hope that name sticks.
Yeah, we like it.
It is in the middle of Belle Isle marge anyway, so it all fits. I'm comfortable with the fifty percent spread, and I'm sure there's kind of big documentation of this somewhere. And we've got a long way to go before we get to that point, we've got the public hearing, we've got the zoning committee, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that we can work out mutual agreements that are going to work for everybody. But, you know, I, I tell people everywhere I go, and I was at the MMA meeting for the last couple of days and talking about whose, whose purchase Suffolk Downs and how excited we are. And to a man, everybody knows HYM, and everybody knows your reputation, proceed you, and we're, we're very lucky here, and I don't mind keep, to keep spreading that out because I want the citizens to know that this is an exciting time for, frankly, for a place I was worried about. And I'm sure a lot of my colleagues were. We were, you know, a lot of history, Suffolk Downs and a lot of history with the casino coming and not coming, and, and a lot of fears, and fears of massive housing developments and, and stuff like that. And we, you know, obviously, we're not looking for that. And so anyways, I'm grateful for your presentation, but more grateful that you are in fact the, the group that purchased this site.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Tom, for coming in before us tonight. Congratulations on the Amazon. I just want, before I, Counselor Rizzo brought up a good point about Overlook Ridge, which is in my ward. They, the council, and it was long before I started, eleven years ago, actually Frank Strang is in the audience, he probably could tell the Pacifics better than I can, but they, Revere did make an agreement with Overlook about, they had to build a hotel. And, and that's been, they built, they managed to build, I don't know, seven hundred apartments probably in Revere, but the, Malden's been going crazy up there building apartments. They can't, they can't build, Overlook cannot build any more apartments in Revere until they build a hotel. So, but what, the bad part about it is though, Malden's getting all the property tax and the, on the, on, and we're getting all the, the exit and entrance is in Revere, and we're getting all the traffic problems and all the, the, the bad part about it, that came, that's coming out of the project. But I just wanted to make that point, that they're dying, they're blasting Revere, they're dying to build a Revere up there, but they can't until they build a hotel. There was supposed to be a main street, there was supposed to be restaurants, and it just never developed that way. Like I say, that's before that was all done in several administrations ago and, and whatever. But to get back to the, your site, which is, I, I love the plan here that you, you talked about tonight, Amazon kind of, we're all, everybody's crazy about, you know, Amazon, and I just, you know, I get, I get delivered the Globe and the Herald every day and I read and I watch the local news, and all I've been, all I've been seeing and reading is that Boston, Somerville, you know, I never hear of Revere. You know, I mean, it's, it's crazy, it's, it's, you know, so I'm just getting a little nervous here, I don't know, maybe it's me, but I'm just saying, oh, Jesus, I wonder if they can split Boston and Somerville, they're going to make up some kind of deal here, and they're going to, they want to like satellite, satellite out to different areas of Boston and, different areas of Boston, and they want to go to Assembly Mall or, you know, whatever. I just hope that you can't split that development there and like Revere and Malden did, you know, up in Overlook. Maybe a man.
Yeah, Counselor, just one, one note through, through the Madam President. I have been in communication with Mayor Walsh and have made sure that everyone understands that we're all on board with the Suffolk Downs site as being the site that is going to be pitched out of the, the proposal that was put together. So there's, you know, Somerville has kind of thrown themselves into the, into the mix. We will have, you know, ongoing conversations, but I've had this conversation with Mayor Walsh about the site and the fact that we're focusing our efforts on the Suffolk Downs site. I will say this, that in, in terms of Amazon, and we've had conversations with, with Tom about this, is that Amazon are not, this is going to be a transformational development for the city and for the region. We are not putting all of our eggs in the Amazon basket, but we, we will make sure that there's transformational development that transforms the region. It's not just going to be about Revere or East Boston, it's going to be a regional impact, a positive regional impact that happens. So have, have no concerns about the fact that both the city of Boston and the city of Revere are pitching Suffolk Downs as a site for, for Amazon.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Madam President. The understanding that we went through, Mr. O'Brien, with Overlook Ridge, we were offered quite a few things. And unfortunately, it did not turn out the way that we would have wanted it, and I can understand Counselor Rizzo's skepticism and the desire to possibly want an MOU to move forward, but I think that's a little premature. What I am going to do, what I would like to do, is basically envelop a committee very similar to what they do with Arctic Lady in Boston. Education's going to be the major issue here in the city of Revere, and as a city, we must work together and plan and guide this project forward. So to that end, that's what I plan on doing, and I understand the mayor's going to be doing something similar on his end. And my thought is, is both of these processes incorporated, we can educate the people as to what's taking place and from time to time, deal with some of the issues that arise and move forward that way. I will tell you that there is great concern in the, the point of residential component. I know that you and the mayor are working forward towards a resolution, towards the mix and so forth, and I know that's going to change based upon the, the dynamics of the market and obviously that of Amazon. But that said, I look forward to work with you, I look forward to getting the community involved in this process. I hope, and as we spoke, within the next couple of months, from time to time, we get the community together, I know you're doing that each month, and let them better understand what's taking place. Because at the end of the day, this is basically going to be a community within a community, and the people here need to understand that. And this is not only transformational, it's going to be what's going to decide the future of our community, both in the terms of probable jobs as well as economics, and more importantly, housing. As we gentrify that area, we're going to cause an increase in the cost of housing throughout the area, and we need to figure out what we're going to do for those people that may not be able to afford housing here. So I look forward to working with you, and thank you.
Point of the nation.
Speech of one Counselor.
Thank you. We've been in discussion, Counselor Rotundo, that HYM, Dino, the mayor and myself, we're going to have forums in Beachmont and maybe up at the high school. I just talked to the mayor tonight, and we talked about when I come back from vacation to have a forum for Beachmont, and we've talked to HYM. We had a date set, but because I'm going on vacation, we changed the date to after I came back from vacation. So there is planning in forums, community forums for Beachmont and citywide, so I just wanted to express my thought to Counselors.
Through you, Madam President, to Counselor McKenna as well as the mayor, I, I hope that there will be an expression in which we can have either reverse 911 or some type of robo-call go out to the community and get as many people to show up to this particular forum as possible. I believe that the good works of HYM and obviously that of the city will help better embrace the project and get people to better understand it for what it is. And to that end, if for some reason we can't do reverse 911, let me know, we'll work on a robo-call together.
To you, Madam President, to Counselor Rotundo, we've already talked about advertising a robo-call, paper, newspaper, articles.
Perfect.
So we've already talked about that.
Counselors, I think that this might be a great conversation to have to plan, meeting committee, and then get the residents the actual dates when we have some hard facts in front of us so that we could put together an agenda and let them know what exactly the dates are, where the meetings will be, and what is happening. That way we can give clear, concise information and not confusing information. Counselor Guanasso?
Madam President, I have some good news for Counselor Patch. If he cancels the subscription to the Boston Globe and to the Boston Herald and get one for the Lynn item, Lynn item headlines was, Lynn loses out in the Amazon bid, but Revere's still in the game. So, and, and so that was very positive news for the city of Revere, and thankfully, thankfully the Lynn item saw fit to put Revere in, in the headlines with the good news. And the other conversations that I've been watching, and as many of us all have, in terms of our partner in this project, Mayor Walsh and city of Boston, on several occasions, he has mentioned that Boston is in dire need for residential units. And so, given that, we should give him all the residential using units that he needs and just put a footmark on it that they shouldn't be low-income housing because we certainly have enough of that, and, and go forward with a, what I project as a unbelievable, beautiful project. And I think that all of the council's input has been well worth listening to because you all had something very interesting to state. And I think that collectively, I don't think you could get a better listener than Tom O'Brien and his, his group, because they certainly come to this council chamber full with information, not afraid to answer any of the hard questions, and being as truthful as possible. So in this business- So, in this business, I've only learned for many years, uh, as was mentioned, that the Overlook project and so many other projects are right down the street, Water, Waterfelt Front Development, we were in the first phase was gonna be a hotel, there's not even a hotel there yet, but, so we, we were misled in those particular directions and, and we've learned from, from that in the, in the previous experience, but I have faith in H Y M, I have faith in Mr. O'Brien and his staff and I, and I, and I think that we have something good going here. And I certainly, the outcry here is this, if we have to have residential properties there, as we know we do, but certainly give us the commercial enterprises that we need and I think that the shops they were mentioning, it's just perfect. And if you go to these other major areas, Marketplace and Winfield, they're thinking about one in Saugus now, one over in Somerville, these are, uh, very types, these are the very type of project you want within your community. This makes a betterment to your community and it's a, it grows our community. So, uh, I look forward to, uh, very successful working hand with you people and I, and I, I think the city council and, and all its, uh, conversation, I hear nothing but good things, but positive direction, no negativity, it's just looking for the, the answers that our constituents are asking us. So, uh, I look forward to working with you over the years and I certainly, uh, think this is gonna be a tremendous development, whether we get Amazon or not. Even the lesser of the two is a unbelievable project, so we should all be proud of that. The City of Revere is still a player, Charlie, we're still here, read the Lynn item. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilors. Again, this will be going to a public hearing on the city council on February twenty-sixth as well as the planning board will be holding a public hearing on the twenty-seventh, so anyone interested can attend either meeting. Uh, from the public hearing, it will also be going to the zoning subcommittee where I would recommend that we give at least, uh, well over an hour for conversation because as you can see, this has been a topic of great discussion. So, we will, uh, place this communication on file and again, the actual, uh, application will be going to a public hearing on the twenty-sixth. Place on file.
Thank you. Number seven. Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Councilors Keith and Patch that the mayor provide an update to the city council on the work, on the work progress at Griswold Field.
Councilor Keith.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I think this is also very similar to a motion, uh, if we can combine the two, uh, motion presented by Councilor Morabito, that this, uh, if there is a potential plan to put it out to bid, so if we can, if, if I can ask that we combine these two?
So, Councilor Morabito, can we, uh, add you to this motion and combine them?
Absolutely. I, I believe that we could probably do away with this motion and just add Keith to, uh, motion nineteen because I believe we, we know the status of the project, we just wanted to go out to bid, if he's okay with that.
Uh, that, it, it really doesn't make a lot of difference to me, I'm just looking to, uh, hopefully get some feedback. I haven't specifically seen the plans, I know that just recently I've spoken, uh, to the mayor, I know Councilor Patch is interested as well as, uh, the many residents of Revere and, uh, some of the youth that's, uh, plays down the field is, is very interested in seeing what's gonna happen and, uh, and how quickly we're gonna be able to get things done. So, I'm just hoping to get some sort of information to the council, but also some information to the residents of Revere on what the plans are, how, how soon, um, the act will be made, if there'll be any disruption in the upcoming, uh, I mean, I know it's January, but baseball's right around the corner, if there'll be any disruption in the baseball and or softball schedules and, uh, what we're gonna be doing with, with the eventual plans to complete what's going, uh, St. Mary's, Walfields or Griswold Falls.
Okay. So, it'd be my recommendation to amend the, uh, current motion, which we're talking about, which is eighteen dash eighteen, uh, add the exact verbiage from Councilor Morabito's motion, eighteen dash thirty, and then just add him to this one motion.
So, can I ask for a suspension of rules and can we speak on it now? Oh.
I don't think you need a suspension of rules for amending the motion.
We, so can we speak on it?
Because we're gonna, we're gonna speak, it's on as amended.
Okay.
So, there's no need to suspend rules.
Okay.
Um, we're on calendar item number seven. So, Councilor Keith, uh, Councilor Morabito?
So, I, I think Councilor Keith is correct, we should take a proactive, um, approach. You know, last year, the kids were playing on the field, um, sure they had the porter parties out there, but there was no bathroom, no facility out there, um, there was no concession stand. I think it's very important this day and age, parents are so busy, they're running after work, they're bringing their kid, one, one of their kids playing soccer, one of their kids is playing baseball or softball and they're, they have limited time. So, for instance, if the coaches aren't supplying the water, there is no, no other resource for parents or the players, the kids, to get water from a concession stand. Also, they, they have the porter parties, which has hand sanitizer, but I think it's only right, we have a state-of-the-art, um, baseball field, why not just put this out to bid while it's, um, in the winter so we can get going on it in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Patch.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I've been trying to follow this, um, there's, there's five hundred thousand dollars there, um, it's been sitting there for, uh, three years now, um, to get that building, uh, put up for, uh, concession stand, uh, public, uh, restrooms and a storage area. Um, I constantly go in, uh, to the, to see Marie and the, and to see if any, if it's been put up for bid yet, uh, for the building. Unfortunately, uh, two years ago, it was, uh, the bid that went out, um, uh, was way too, uh, the low, was way too high, so it was said like seven hundred thousand dollars, so, um, so I, I don't know, I, I hear that the plans are done and they have been done for a while. My point was to, to put this motion out was to, um, to get moving on it because as Councilor Keith says, uh, there'll be, uh, you know, if they're gonna be building while they're, they're playing, it's gonna be, cause, uh, uh, you know, cause some problems. Um, so what, what I, uh, you know, the main problem is the restrooms, um, uh, you know, it's, it gets pretty bad when, uh, you know, the, especially the girls, the young girls, uh, when they have to, uh, use the, they, they, they don't wanna, they don't wanna use those party, uh, portable parties, uh, and, and the part, the poor, the parents have to, and what they're doing is, I'm getting, and I'm getting several complaints, uh, from, from people that, uh, you know, they have to, they have to run home to use the bathroom. So, um, you know, so, you know, they suffered now for three years there, uh, moving around, uh, from park to park at first and then using a park without restrooms or concession stands, which as, as, as Councilor Morabito, uh, pointed out, it's, it's, it's creating problems down there. And it, there's no need of, the money's sitting there, it's been sitting there for three years. Uh, the plan, um, uh, the original plan, granted, was, uh, was, but that was, that's been two years. So, um, let's, if, if, if the new plans are done, there's, there should be no reason why it's not out to bid already and I just think, um, if, because once it starts, the good weather comes in, you wanna start, you want the contractor in place and you want to start the building. And so we, uh, so that's, uh, that's the main, uh, reason why I was, I wanted the motion. Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Are you comfortable with the amendments to your original motion?
I agree, I agree.
Counselor, uh, Rizzo, followed by Counselor Powers.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I wanna thank, uh, Councilor Keith for putting this motion in. It's been a, a bone of contention for me since those fields started three, three years ago. Um, I think the fields came out great and as part of those fields, in the original plan, was a concession stand with restrooms. Uh, now, for the last two years and who knows, uh, how much longer, the kids, the parents, the grandparents are all forced to go to a porter party, they can't get a hot dog, they can't get a, any popcorn, you know, nothing, things that typically kids do at a Little League game, that we had and came to expect down there. My kids played down there twenty years ago and, you know, it wasn't anything magnificent, we know that, but the fields were good, we had a concession stand, we had bathrooms. Now, everyone's forced to run to a porter party or, as Councilor Patch said, to go home. It's ridiculous. Now, I've heard that the, uh, plans that have been drawn up that will eventually go out to bid, um, is now, uh, instead of a, uh, cement or block structure, is gonna be a stick build, which as we all know, that's pretty marshy back there, I don't know long-term how good that's gonna be or how, how, you know, how good that's gonna work out, uh, going forward. And, you know, I mean, I look at some of the salaries that have been given out over the last couple of years and we're talking about not letting people go and use the restrooms or have a concession stand, for kids to be able to go, uh, in between games or after games and help raise money for the league. I, it's just, uh, it's beyond, uh, it's beyond my imagination that this can still be talked about over two years later, uh, talking about restrooms and concession stands. It's embarrassing, in all honesty, that we're still talking about this as if it's some big thing that we need to get done. If it had gone forward in the beginning, the price, okay, if the price was a little higher than what people thought it should've come in, look at the benefit that the people would've had down at that field over the last couple of years. Look at the money the league could've made over the last couple of years. It's peanuts, it's a drop in the bucket. And so, we're still talking about, and I'm thankful to Councilor Keith for putting the motion in, but the, this, you know, things have to have a resolution. You can't have conversations all the time, you know? We can have conversations about a lot of things, but I'd like to see actual action come from this, get rid of the porter parties and put what that field deserves. You get three beautiful fields down there and yet, you know, the caveat to it all is people have to run to their cars and go home to use the restroom. It just doesn't make any, any good sense to me. So, hopefully we'll actually get an answer from the motion, which would be great if we got an answer to it, and see when and what to expect down at these fields. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Councilor Rizzo was absolutely right, the, uh, the park down there is a, a tremendous park, uh, my son played down there, uh, over thirty years ago, my grandchildren, uh, played down there. And, uh, the reason, uh, I'm speaking on this is I, I had an occasion to run into Councilor Patch, who represents that area down there. Uh, Saturday evening, I was having dinner and, uh, as he was, and he brought this to my attention about the, uh, the lack of toilet facilities, the lack of the refreshment stand. And I told him that, uh, I would make it a point today to speak to the mayor regarding this. And, uh, I did, late this afternoon, uh, because I'm as concerned as anyone else. It's not just about Ward Five, it's about the entire City of Revere, that we all represent up here, whether we're ward councils or councils at large or, or whatever we are. And, uh, the mayor, uh, did indicate to me that, uh, the, uh, these, these are close to his exact words, the original price was around seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, he felt that, uh, he wanted to look at that, it was a considerable amount of money. I know that Donnie Tramara has been down there, uh, the, the city assistant city engineer and, uh, he has been looking at that and I believe he came back and, uh, explained to the, the mayor that, uh, that could be done, uh, after the foundation was put in with, uh, wood framing. And, uh, the, the mayor assured me today that, uh, that's something that he's gonna move along as quickly as possible and, uh, my answer to him with regard to that was, you know, you can do wood framing as long as you have a foundation that will stand up to the elements, the elements being, uh, the flooding down there. And, uh, he assured me that, uh, they were looking into that and hopefully, uh, this will be on a fast-track ASAP. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Tondo?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the mics are kinda throwing me off as to which one I'm going to grab. Um, that said. Thank you, Counselor Powers, that was quite comical. That said, um, I do remember.
Live mic, guys.
I do remember a conversation, um, maybe a year and a half ago regarding the cost construct of a precast, um, concession stand and, uh, restroom facility and it was of several hundred thousand dollars more than what it is today. Um, I get the idea of the cost, wood frame versus, um, precast concrete. My understanding was the purpose of having precast concrete was to withstand the weathering and the flooding that takes place down there, even though they're supposed to be, uh, resolved, I'm sure, a hundred, uh, you know, plain flood to the area, it's going to take place sooner or later. Um, but it's troubling to me because now you've got people that just have a park that they can't really truly utilize, you know, and, uh, you have girls like I do and there's only so much weight and they can do, so.
Point of information, Madam.
Speaker of the House, Councilor.
Madam President, just point of information, and Councilor Tondo brought up a, a very valid point, it wasn't just, you know, just the flooding, it, but you know, when you, when you, when you take on any capital asset that you're gonna spend money on, you wanna know what's the lifespan. And certainly, um, a concrete or masonry type structure is gonna last much longer than a wood frame. So, you've gotta add that into the cost of the equation, it can't just be, what are we gonna spend today? It's what, yeah, what are the needs of the community and how long is this asset going to last? What's the long-term cost? So, I think that Councilor Tondo was alluding to that and, uh, I think it's a very, very valid point, one that we have to always consider whenever we take on a capital project. You might spend a little more early on, but if it lasts the city another twenty or thirty years, then, then you have to amortize that out. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? On the motion as amended, all in favor?
All opposed.
So ordered.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councilor Patch that the mayor request the city engineer and C D M Smith to remedy a sump pump and drainage problem on Orbis Road. There is no drainage or catch basins on Orbis Road. Water from sump pumps of several residences flood the street causing water pooling during the summer and icing during the winter.
Councilor Patch?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. This has been a problem for several years. Um, the original builder of those houses on that street, uh, unfortunately got away without putting any catch basins and we have, matter of fact, we have, uh, that problem on several streets. Um, it, it was, I mean, this has all been done, was done, uh, thirty years or thirty years ago, so, um, all this, all the sump pumps, um, that are on the street have been permitted and have been, um, told to run out into the street. Unfortunately, it, every rainstorm we get or, um, they, it freezes, uh, you know, uh, during the winter and I'm not, I'm not talking about just a little sheet of ice, I mean, you get ten inches of ice. Um, so, you know, just, it's just an overworked, uh, water department has to go down there and, um, and, and fix the problem, so, I mean, several times a year. Um, so, I, I'm hoping, you know, with all the money that, uh, C D M Smith's, uh, spending, that they could, uh, see to the, a design to do some kind of catch base, basin and, uh, drainage system for Orbis Road and also look into, like, I believe Sherman Street, there's, uh, there's other streets that, um, don't have, uh, catch basins, uh, and have similar problems. So, that's, uh, that's why I, I, that's why I wanna go forward and see what the, see what happens, uh, see what the mayor comes up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors?
If I may speak from the chair, I think this is a, a great motion on behalf of Councilor Patch and this is a great example of a motion that, uh, you know, we, we talked to the D P W about it, I know I've had correspondence back with, uh, D P W several years, uh, from talking to residents on this street and this issue, but unfortunately, we can't resolve it on our own, so I think it was a great, uh, move on behalf of Councilor Patch to have the foresight to request. it was a great move on behalf of Councilor Patch to have the foresight to request the mayor to request this of CDM Smith, and I hope that we can find a solution to it. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Counselor, item number nine, Councilor Zambudo is recused from this motion. Motion submitted by Councilor Morbido, Councilors Morbido, McKenna, and Genino, that the city council go on record as supporting a toll discount for Revere residents. Also, that the city clerk on behalf of the city council send a letter of support to the Senate's Joint Committee on Transportation, supporting the following legislation. House Bill 1910, an act relative to tolls on the Tobin and Mystic River Bridge and Sumner Tunnel. House Bill H1911, an act relative to tolls at the Sumner Tunnel. House Bill 1912, an act relative to tolls on the Tobin Mystic River Bridge. And House Bill 1914, an act exempting certain elderly.
Counselor McKenna, followed by Counselor Morbido.
Sure. I'll go first.
Councilor Morbido?
So, Rep. Rosely Vincent filed legislation that's going to go before the Joint Committee of Transportation on January 24th, which is Wednesday. I'd like to see us go on record, not only supporting the legislation, but sending a letter in support of giving Revere residents who have registered vehicles a toll discount. I, I believe strongly in this, because each day, over a hundred thousand vehicles pass through Revere from other cities. Not only do we get the burden of pollutants in the air, and our citizens suffer the horrible quality of air, we also have the likelihood of accidents increasing. What does that mean? We use city resources, because first responders, first responders have to go to the scene. So, we use our city resources, and on top of that, more accidents means higher insurance premiums. And who has to pay for that? The residents registered in Revere, whose vehicles registered in Revere. So, we're getting the brunt of all the traffic coming in and out of this city, going into Boston, and at all our neighboring cities, like East Boston, Winthrop, and Charleston, they all receive a discount, and we don't. And we suffer the impact, and I think it's only fair that Revere, as a community, and our citizens, get our fair share.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. So, about a year and a half ago, Councilor Morbido and I went up to the Transportation Committee at the State House and spoke to reduce the tolls for the Revere residents, and it was denied. If you listen to WBZ every single day, Traffic on the Threes, you'll hear Revere constantly, from the morning till six o'clock at night. The pollution is affecting our residents, the noise is affecting our residents, the traffic trickling in our city is affecting our residents. It's not a citywide problem, it's a regional problem, and we really, really need to address this problem and get what we deserve. So, I hope this bill passes, and, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors wishing to speak on this motion? Hi. Didn't see you. Oh, no problem. Snack up behind you.
Yeah, didn't hear you.
Sorry. It's not good.
Thank you. Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just want to commend the councilors for putting this motion forward. This is a fantastic motion. For too long, Revere's been the cut-through city, and we get the bulk of the traffic for these two state roads. We don't get the discount that our neighbors get. It's very unfair, and I appreciate you stepping up. One thing I noticed in the motion, I did not see the Ted Williams Tunnel on the motion. Is it possible to add that, or is it too late?
That is part of the legislation.
It's part of the current legislation for the tolls. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. This is a great motion, and I'm glad you put it in. It's a long time coming. Hopefully, it will help, and hopefully, that Senator Boncori is now...
Yes.
...the joint co-chair on that committee. So, hopefully, we'll get a little bit more weight and a little bit more support on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the motion, oh, any, no, there's an itch? Okay. On the motion, and again, Councilor Zambudo is recused from this. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Counselor, item number 10, Councilor Zambudo is also recused from this motion. Motion presented by Councilors Novosowski, Powers, and Guanasso, that the mayor requests DCR and Mastod to set up a meeting to discuss traffic on Revere Beach Boulevard and traffic signalization at North Shore Road and Revere Street.
Go right down the line. Councilor Novosowski?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we've always been talking about traffic, and how bad it is in our city in the morning, in the afternoon, at night, and I think it's time that we requested to sit down with the agencies involved and start talking about a solution, rather than just talking about the problem. And, you know, I have some thoughts on it. I've put them in writing, you know, to myself, so when we do have the meeting, or whatever get-together we can make happen, to discuss this. I know Councilor Powers' district is inundated with traffic, and especially in the morning, you know, you can't get past Kerry Circle without spending forty-five minutes to get down to Revere Street on Ocean Avenue. And Councilor Guanasso has the problem on Revere Street, on both directions, coming out of the beach and coming down Revere Street into North Shore Road. We have to try and make Mastod understand that the traffic lights at North Shore Road and Revere Street are not only for them. We have local people that are involved in this thing. And not even that, the people that are coming through our city are not Revere people. They're people from Marblehead, Swampscott, Lynn, Salem. They're the ones that are causing all this traffic. And I think it's time that we sat down, put our heads together, get our state delegation together, and may add our state delegation to, into those meetings. And see what we can do to try and solve this problem. It's not fair to us. We have to do something about it. So, I wanted to take that step tonight, and have this council take the bull by the horns, and move on. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Novosowski is 100% right. Ward Five is probably the most heavily impacted area in the city of Revere with regards to traffic coming from Salem, Swampscott, Marblehead, Rockport, Gloucester, that whole area down there. Now, there are two solutions to that. First solution, and I don't think that's going to happen tomorrow, but it should happen tomorrow, and I, and I think that Governor Baker, living in Swampscott, coming through that traffic every morning, unless he takes the commuter line to Boston. The solution there is to put that, fund that earmark that's in the transportation bond bill for $25 million to put the T station in back of Wonderland. We've got eighty acres there when you consider Neco, the Neco site and the Wonderland site that would be, in addition to the airport-generated traffic, that would be servicing that, that station there. It involves probably a platform and a walkover, an enclosed walkover to the Blue Line. We all know that, not all, probably not most, but a good part of that traffic that comes there through the city in the morning, whether they're on 1A, the Boulevard, or 107, is airport-related traffic, people flying out during the morning to get to New York, or Washington, or wherever they may be going, vacations, et cetera. And it would be, wouldn't it be much simpler for them to just go to their local commuter station, get on the commuter line, take it, get off of Wonderland, and walk over, and go five or six stops to Logan Airport? That's one solution. The other solution is going to be coming before us very soon, and on that, we can have some influence. And that's the 145 units being planned on Revere Beach Boulevard at, at the site down there where Bill Ashes is, not where Bill Ashes, where the Bianchi's Pizza is. Now, I've heard comments up here that, you know, Bianchi's Pizza is historical, it's part of our history...
Counselor, let's stick to the motion.
Thank you. Well, I, I think this is, this is part, part of the solution. My second solution is zoning. Zoning is in place for a reason, and every time we go overboard and allow for thirty, or forty, or fifty extra units, we're defeating our, our purpose up, up here, and we're also defeating the motion that was put in by Councilor Novosowski, Councilor Guanasso, and myself tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly, there's several events that occur down on Revere Beach, such as, namely, one of them, the Sandcastle event. It wouldn't take too much input from the state police, the DCR, MBTA police, and the City of Revere Traffic Division to curtail the gridlock that occurs for all our citizens relative to those events. I just mention that because it's, it's a very simple solution. I had a, a problem a couple of years back, where some residents of mine in Ward Three, living in the Ward Street area, and off of Malden Street, were taking like forty-five minutes to get home. I asked the mayor at that time to get together with MBTA, and I did. I got together with the MBTA, and they put their offices at the corner of Revere Street and North Shore Road on a nightly basis. And that sped up the traffic on that corner like you wouldn't believe. It, it made, it made traffic move. Again, I am going to wear myself out saying this, that Revere is a regional area for traffic, meaning that it's a cut-through for many, many cities and towns around us. Whether they're going to the airport, whether they're going to work in Boston, we are a regional trafficked area. And certainly, what these additional cars, they, it's a big inconvenience for all our residents who live in our community. But we just have to come up with a solution to remedy this. We just can't sit back and say, well, you know, there's a problem there, let's stop this, let's stop that, let's not, let's stop new growth, let's do this. We already did quite a bit of what we're supposed to do, and we did these actions. Now, we need to have results in terms of cooperation. And, and I, I spoke to a member of the state police, and he said, the staff there, the commanding staff, doesn't even want to listen to a correction that could be hap... And he was offering the correction to him, to them, that I suggested to him, and other people suggested to him. They didn't want to hear it, because of, they get X number of dollars for overtime, they're already assigned to certain areas, and this is what they do. And so, this is a very reasonable request that we make, that we sit down and come up with a solution to a very, very serious problem. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is an excellent motion, and, you know, living in Revere oftentimes, you know, it's a blessing. We've got a beautiful beach, access to downtown Boston, access to the North Shore. You see people queued up on Route One at night, going home, and we don't have to go that far. We jump right off, and we're here. But the curse, the curse is that a lot of people do have to cut through Revere to either get into Boston or get home at night. And as a result, we deal with all the negative impacts that come with that. And the one area that I think this motion deals with is Revere Street and North Shore Road. And far be it for me to comment on how to fix the problem, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems to me that the light coming down Revere Street, particularly coming down, heading toward the beach on Revere Street, the light for people that want to take a left is just way too short. It really seems to me like it has, because once two or three cars go through, the light turns green, but not the green arrow. And so, now these people are stuck there, because people are heading west on Revere Street, and it just creates gridlock. And it creates gridlock going all the way back up towards St. Anthony's on Revere Street. So, I mean, I, I know for years, it seems, we've been asking the Department of Transportation, or back-in-the-day Mass Highway, to study this, do some sort of a traffic study, and see if they can adjust the lights, and nothing's ever really changed as a result of it. I know part of it is just an increase in overall traffic. There's no denying that. We've just got more cars on the road, more people living here in the, in our area, and, and, you know, it seems every day, or every month, or every week, we come here to a council meeting, and there's another proposal for another hundred units, two hundred units, forty units. You know, there's just more and more and more people bringing more and more vehicles. So, I mean, there's no denying that that is contributing to the problem, but I think that if we get a good traffic study down there, and we get the DOT to come down and actually sit there for a period of time, I think adjusting those lights would at least offer some relief to that traffic in that one area. It's not going to solve the gridlock that we have on Broadway, it seems now. It used to start about four o'clock. Now, from 2:30 on, you can't get up and down Broadway, and it starts way down at the Chelsea Bridge. In fact, getting off of Route 16 now, you really can't get off there. Anytime after three o'clock in the afternoon, you can't get off Route 16 onto Broadway because of the traffic flow, and something really needs to be done there. I, I personally think that they need to start committing some more resources to the police department, start pulling the traffic. Something, something really has to happen, because, you know, it, it's getting frustrating for people, you know, between school hours and rush hour. It's just becoming real difficult, but I applaud the councilors who put this motion in right now, and hopefully, we can notify the Department of Transportation, and Mark Kratman, have him get somebody out here that can study this, and maybe, maybe change that pattern, the way the lights work down on North Shore Road and Revere Street. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. Be honest with you, this, this is a motion that clearly needed to be done years ago. There needs to be a reconfiguration of the traffic patterns, as Councilor Rizzo has put forward. Route 107, Route 1A, Route 145, on average, have anywhere between 50,000 to 130,000 vehicles per day traversing it, per Mass DOT statistics, and they're actually old. You know, this is an ongoing problem, and regardless of what takes place, the issue is, how do you divert traffic from the beach elsewhere? And at the end of the day, if you divert it from the Boulevard, it's going to have to go to North Shore Road, but it's going to have to go somewhere. And whether we have a police presence to stagger this during peak hours, that's a solution, too, very much what they did during, what was it, not the Olympics, was it, but the, it was an event in town, it escapes my, my mind at the moment.
During the casino. When they were doing, when we were going through the, I think they were doing it around the construction of the Wonderland Garage.
There you go. And so, you know, that's something that, that should be done on a weekly basis, on a daily basis. We know what times we have peak hours, early in the morning, between the hours of six and nine o'clock, and then obviously, later on in the day, between three and 7:00 PM. That's both northbound and southbound. So, if we're going to do something about it, we have to have a police presence in order to take care of it, because there is no construction that's going to alleviate this. We're not going to widen the roads, we're not going to do any takings, so the only solution is a police presence, and hopefully, that can be done. Signalization helps, but at the end of the day, we're stuck with what we have. To, to that end, I enjoy you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a point on that, the, I'd like to mention that, as I was reading the Globe Sunday, I'm sure it was on the front page of the...
They were right.
I'm sure it was on the front page of the Lynn item, with the sort of fifty people in Revere that buy the Lynn item could have read it, but...
You knew it, you got to get ready.
But they're building, they're building 1,500 apartments in, on part of the GE on Western Avenue, and they're building three, it was, 300, over 300 apartments on the Lynn Way in Lynn. So, it's just going to... So, it's just gonna add more traffic for you guys down on the east side, and I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Tondo.
Point of information, no, I've actually done a little research on this issue lately, for many reasons, in particular because of Suffolk Towns. And contrary to what is believed, and you can speak to any traffic engineer, and there's tons of studies online that you can read yourself, that the generation of traffic within our area is minimal. It's less than one percent. In particular, the new construction down on the beach there, that new development there, it's based upon the trip traffic. It's supposed to be two percent less than the volume that's in there. It has a minimal impact on your traffic. The issue is, is traffic transversing the city, going north to towns like Lynn and Salem and Swanskin. That's the problem. It isn't the intermodal issue. It's small. The issue is fitting a hundred thousand people down our highways to go north. That's the issue. Anybody who thinks any, you know, anything differently, they're deluded and sadly mistaken. They need to look at the research. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. All the motions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number eleven, motion presented by Councilor Nowosowski, that the mayor requests the city engineer and a member of the election commission to discuss the reassignment of property addresses.
Councilor.
Thank you, Madam President. How would somebody feel if they moved into the city of Revere, went to register the vote, and got denied? How would you like that to happen to you? Well, this has happened to a constituent of mine. New person moved in, she went to register at the city hall. Sorry, you gave us an incorrect address. You can't live there. I couldn't understand what was going on. And it turned out that, I guess, several years ago, the city engineer got on a kick to adjust all the property addresses in the city. And I guess the rule is that you can only have one address per piece of property. And I'll use my house as an example. I have two addresses, and one side of my house is fifty-three, one to Home Street, the other one is fifty-three to Home Street. The city engineer tells me, "No, there's no such animal as fifty-one to Home Street. There's only fifty-three to Home Street." I said, "Well, the city gave them those numbers eighty-five years ago, and everybody's put their credit cards there, their license there, they pay their electric bills at that address, and now they can't vote there." So, I was really put aside, and I called the election commissioner, and she said, "Well, the city engineer told us that the way we have to have it, and they told the assessors that they have to change all their maps, that if you had fifty-one, fifty-three, it could only be fifty-three." So, now, the election commissioner says, "Well, I talked to the state secretary of state's election department, and they said, 'Well, when they go in to vote, tell them they live at fifty-three to Home Street.'" That means they have to lie. And if they ask for a, they're a new voter, their address is going to show in their license fifty-one to Home Street. What does one do? And I think we have to get a better explanation to clarify this, and we're hurting people by following up on this rule. People should be grandfathered in. A new address is years to it. The people that have been there, and I'll use, I use eighty-five years, and I know some houses are older than that. Totally wrong, in my opinion, and I want an explanation from both parties. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if I can be in here.
No, I'm gonna hold the mic away from you. Too much, I've got things.
I had people on my own committee that were told they couldn't register the vote. I'm glad that my colleague brought this up, because it's something I put aside that I was gonna try to address later. And I went to city hall and spoke to the election commissioner, and I got the same spiel, that the city engineer told her that there's only one address, this happened to be on Mountain Ave. It's absurd. We've got to do something to correct this. You know, this particular house I'm talking about was a hundred years old. So, I mean, it's ridiculous. And so, I know technically, houses should have one address. You can't go back and erase a hundred years of history here and make people, people go crazy when they hear it's not their address. "What are you talking about? It's been my address for a hundred years. How could it not be my address?" Well, it can only be ninety, or it can only be seventy-five and not seventy-seven and seventy. Just absurd. So, well, I think we're gonna get, we're gonna get a copy to the law when we have the city engineer up here. Is that correct? Is that who you're asking for?
It's part of it.
You were giving a resolution.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
It is a mistake. It's a big problem.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twelve, motion presented by Councilor Nowosowski, that the mayor request Patriot Properties to appear before the city council to discuss the revows in the city.
Councilor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, tonight's my night on citywide issues, but they start in my ward. And I get phone calls from residents, senior citizens, stating that, gee, my tax bill went up fifteen hundred dollars over what I was paying before on the two-family house. And that is totally absurd. I had another constituent call me today, a senior citizen that just retired in a condominium, and it went up a thousand dollars, doubled of what he was paying. There's something wrong here, folks. I know they go by a formula, comparable sales, and what the market can bear, but these people are senior citizens. They can barely buy their food with an extra thousand dollars that they have to put up for their taxes. We need an explanation. I know there's a tempus, we voted on a ten percent discount for seniors that won't come into effect till next year, but those aren't every senior. Those are only seniors that make X amount of dollars. I think it's fifty-five thousand dollars or less. And I think it's, I think it's ridiculous that these people have to go through this, they have to scrounge to get food for their tables. So, I look forward to bringing Patriot Properties. And may I add, also, the assessors office to that. So, thank you, Madam President, and I hope we can solve this problem. Thank you.
Councilor Tondo.
Thank you. Is he okay?
He's fine. I think that was a knee-jerk reaction to the conversation.
All right.
I just made sure he was okay.
There we go. So, this is the third time that I've heard this issue, two of them by constituents now, another one by my colleague. This is not an isolated case. Something needs to be done about this. I believe it might be related to the ten percent. It might not be, but I believe that we need to take a thorough look at this. It's very concerning. One person had their taxes raised almost a thousand dollars, and that's unacceptable. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
If I may, I think this is a great motion on behalf of my colleague, and this is something that several people have approached me about as well, and my colleagues have stated most of the things I could say about it, but it's affecting people, and they're catching people off guard. They're knocking on doors at odd times during the day, and people are kind of taken aback by it. So, I think that it's definitely something we should look at and discuss further. Would you wish this to go to committee or just a vote?
Vote. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
As amended, to include the assessors office. All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number thirteen, motion presented by Councilor McKenna, that the mayor requests the police department to utilize a portable digital message sign in Donnelly Square on Winthrop Avenue when Winthrop Parkway is closed. Cars cutting through Beauchamp to Winthrop are then reverted back into Donnelly Square. These cars are getting stuck, causing gridlock, and stifling emergency apparatus and snowplows.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. This really speaks for itself, but I just want to say during the last snowstorm, just by putting signage in Donnelly Square would allow Winthrop residents to take an alternative route, and it wouldn't cause havoc where people would be going down Crescent Ave, Winthrop Ave, and getting stuck there, and then we'd have to call the tow trucks to get them off out of there. Plows couldn't do their jobs, apparatuses couldn't do their jobs because these cars were stuck. So, I suggest that the next time, during a snowstorm, we close Winthrop Parkway. It would be good to put just signage in Donnelly Square. Thank you very much.
Any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number fourteen, motion presented by Councilor McKenna, that the mayor requests the DPW to install RipRap along the edges of Belle Isle Creek abutting Pearl Ave, Orchard Ave, Monferne Ave, Crystal Ave, and Belle Isle Ave to slow down the water surge coming into Beauchamp and flooding these streets. Many houses in Beauchamp and around the city were heavily affected by up to four feet of floodwaters, and some residents lost everything.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a conversation we need to start now. I think as, if you want to call it global warming, I believe in it, the water surge is getting higher and higher, and Revere's getting affected, especially along the creeks, the ocean. So, I had talked to a construction worker, and he was telling me about this rock called RipRap, and it stops, it's put on streams that overflow, and it prevents the water to go into neighborhoods. So, I want to see if maybe, and it's also been approved by the conservation commissioner. So, I'd like to see maybe, and it's cheap, I'd like to see maybe something done along the creeks, the marsh, the streets that we suggested on, in the motion, just to hold the water. The brush and everything that goes along with the water is not holding it, it's just going right through. So, if we could do something that's cost-effective and help these people not get flooded again or prevent some flooding from happening, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rizzo, followed by Councilor Nowosowski.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is an excellent motion by Councilor McKenna. I know, I know how hard she worked during that last storm. We keep hearing about these hundred-year storms, but they keep happening more than every hundred years. So, I don't, I don't totally understand why they're even called hundred-year storms anymore. And this one was probably a thousand-year storm, because those houses that Councilor McKenna is alluding to down there have never been flooded. And so, I mean, whether you believe in climate change or global warming, whatever you want to call it, storms are getting stronger. Places that typically didn't get snow are now getting snow. You know, there's, you know, there's something happening out there that, whether it's man-made or otherwise, that, you know, there's definitely something going on with our weather patterns, and we need to protect residents down there. There's nothing more heartbreaking than to get phone calls and hear and see people that are, you know, helpless. They're helpless to Mother Nature when it comes their way with that type of storm surge and that type of wind and that, you know, and there's really nothing that we can do as a community until it all subsides, other than to try to, you know, if they need some sort of temporary housing and emergency shelter or something along those lines, and, you know, hopefully, it doesn't come down to, but, you know, provide rescue operations. But, you know, it's a difficult situation for them down there, and anything that we can do, and I know Councilor McKenna, you want to get the conversation started about, let's at least get something started here on how we can protect, whether that includes any type of new construction or reconstruction, along with any avenues that we can take to protect those homes down there that currently exist, because, you know, this last storm, if it took anything for any of us to see the impacts that we can, we're still subjected to and we're still vulnerable to, it was that last storm, and to see what happened to those poor residents. So, I totally agree with the motion and would like to be included in the conversations as they go forward. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, when I saw some of those videos on Facebook of Lower Pearl Ave and Lower Winthrop Ave and Crescent Ave and down below Endicott, I couldn't believe my eyes seeing those cars frozen in the water up to their windows. And I felt bad. Thank God, my ward, which usually does get water, didn't. So, the brunt of it went to Ward One and Ward Five. Now, knowing a little about RipRap and that the Corps of Engineers is famous for installing that, I think this job's a little bigger, a little, a lot bigger than our DPW can handle. And I would, I would like to try and get some information from the Army Corps of Engineers. And it's an engineering nightmare to get this done. Thank God, when they put the gates up on the Winthrop Parkway, it helps the folks down in Paster area. And, you know, thanks to Councilor Rizzo, he got that change on the zoning, on the flood zoning, back in, you know, ten, about seven, eight years ago, if not a little further. But I think it's a little larger engineering than our DPW can handle. I don't know if we want to send it someplace else, get some help from the Army Corps of Engineers, as I said, go through our state, federal delegation, because that's a federal issue, you know, to get some federal money to try and get this done. It definitely needs to get done, and again, it's not an overnight fix. It's a long, long-term fix, like the gates were when we did in Beauchamp. So, I'd like to get some kind of recommendation or ask that it also be forwarded to our federal delegation and to get to the Army Corps of Engineers and see if we can get some action moving here.
I believe it's a...
Thank you.
That's a great idea, Ira, Councilor Nowosowski. And I just, I believe that, I think it's DCR, it's not DPW, that, you know, is involved with that piece of land. So, I think it would be, it would also have to be a DCR issue.
Thank you, councilors. Any other councilors wishing to speak on this? On the motion as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number fifteen, motion presented by Councilor Keith, that the mayor present to the city council the effectiveness and results of the 3-1-1 system to include benchmarks and comparisons with similar communities.
Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. In this motion, it came to light with a number of issues. Some of the residents that work with me and they report issues, they've brought up some, they'd like to see a little bit more follow-through, and as a council, we talked, I think, the last meeting about councilor's impact and sometimes simplicity of putting in, rather than putting in a motion, is submitting a 3-1-1. There's times when I put in a 3-1-1 ticket, just like a constituent would, and they turn up to be closed, just to find out that the problem wasn't resolved and it wasn't traditionally addressed. It may have been forwarded to another department and/or, sometimes it is a logical explanation. It may have to go to a non-city service. It could be an MBTA issue. So, I think that I would suggest and ask with an update from the 3-1-1 department to get more feedback to the constituents as to what the status is when it is closed, if it's not completed. Secondly, I would like to see some sort of metrics from the department on the effectiveness of each request, whether it's a street repair request, is it taking an average of two, three, four days, or maybe another department, what, how long these, these tickets or these 3-1-1 tickets are being, taken care of, and where do they stand up with communities that we would consider benchmarks? I know Boston uses 3-1-1, so, and I understand that we probably don't have the same resources as Boston, but I'd like to see where we stand up against what I would consider to be benchmark communities. So, just the overall is... So just the overall is, I do like the ease of the app. I, I have it, and I, and I also do like that you can pick up the phone from a Revere location and just dial 3-1-1. That doesn't always help on a holiday. I know that residents, I have elderly residents that call me and they say I, 3-1-1 wasn't able to answer, "Help me because it was a holiday." Who do I call? And they're all being told, "Call 3-1-1." Obviously, Mount Luther King, just, day just happened, so, and we had some freezing temperatures that were affecting residents, and so I certainly got a lot of calls that day. Fortunately, I was able to reach out to department heads. Hopefully, I won't get anyone in trouble, but they were, they definitely helped me resolve the issues. But I think that it would be nice to clarify for the residents a little bit more information on 3-1-1, and then let's discuss, is it working? And if it's not working, what can we do to help, help it work better? But also, is it, is it bringing up the good stuff that maybe the city's doing? Or sometimes is it bringing up an opportunity that a department may have so that we can use it to the fullest advantage, to the fullest extent?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, great motion. I think it's something we have to look at and talk about. I know before we had C Click Fix, and that was shifted over to 3-1-1. In general, I think, personally, I'm a great user of it, and I've probably put in over a thousand requests since it got started. And, you know, there were potholes, there's signs, there are things, trash to be picked up, you know, by city services. And, and even dirty yards, high grass from people's houses that get out of control, that the Board of Health has to work with, and zoning issues, apartment, illegal apartments, have them look at that. I, I think I've almost hit every, every department that, city service that we all use. And I have found, I have personally found that, and it's not that I'm, I'm degrading any department, I don't want anybody to feel that I'm picking on them, but the Board of Health, I get excellent service from building departments, in general, the DPW. But in the DPW, we have a bigger problem. Number one, we're already talking about our deplorable conditions that these guys have to work in. And I'm not, I don't want that to be the major part of the motion, the discussion. But things like highway, potholes, whether they be in the middle of the street or along the curb, I find that those sections are slow. But picking up trash, things on the side of road that people dump, those are picked up quickly. But I blame the slowness of some services due to the lack of help. Public Works Department is so depleted in personnel. I know we just got some people in water and sewer, but some, that's not the problem. Those guys are working hard, and they're out there in the cold weather. I saw them working on my street the other day in the below-zero weather. It's the problem of the daily stuff, the non-emergency stuff that is slow. And now everybody's talking about potholes. I put 10 pothole requests in today alone, driving around the neighborhood. We're talking about signage that the Traffic Commission approves, and it takes nine months for it to get done.
Yeah.
That's totally unacceptable. And I've just sent an email to a city clerk, they have a DPW subcommittee meeting on February 2nd, if it's possible, at 5:00, to talk about these issues. And we'll bring up the superintendents, and we'll talk more about it. It's time we started getting more in the DPW, and giving the guys the credit that they do, and try and get them more help in the new building. So with that, I hope, you know, we can move on this, and thank you, Counselor, for putting it in.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tondo.
Thank you. I hope, yeah, better luck, I gave this information than I have in the past. One of the things that I think that needs to be really looked at is the failure rate of the system. Well, you're looking at matrices and so forth, but also, what is citizen satisfaction? That's a major issue as well. And then what is the scaling of use? For example, when we have 10 pieces of data that I turn to the system, is there one that has a higher ranking of need versus another? For example, if you have trash on the sidewalk, I mean, obviously, that's, you know, when you're triaging, that's minimal, that's not an issue, versus someone's power line's down. So that would obviously take precedence, even though it's not something the DPW would do, but our tree would be down, what have you. So what is the scaling process of this? And is there a matrix that you were pointing out that deals with this particular issue? So that's something that I'd like to find out.
Thank you, Counselor.
That was my work.
Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor update the city council with regards to negotiations with RCM, an alternative cable provider to Comcast. Further, that the mayor provide an update regarding the status of Comcast franchise renewal, specifically regarding Wi-Fi hotspots, senior discounts, and ETP funding.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So for years, this city has been asking about an alternative cable provider, and up to now, other than the Dish, we really haven't had that option, you know, satellite TV versus Comcast. And finally, I think because of this booming economy, that this sustained economy that we've been in, RCN, I believe, has agreed to come to the city of Revere, as it has several other communities, and build out the city. One of the reasons why cable providers have not come to the city of Revere has been the cost involved. They have to recoup their costs if they're going to come into a community. So they need to know that they're going to make enough money, not only to pay for their investment, but to actually make money. So RCN believes that now they can make money, and they're going to come in and build out the city of Revere, which is great news, because now competition should take place, you know, similar to when Market Basket came in, that drove, you know, that drove the cost down in Stop &amp; Shop. So now that, you know, you had that competition, that people had options. RCN will now be giving our residents options. So hopefully, that's good news for ratepayers, because as we know, the cable bills keep going up and up and up. The second part of the motion, as the clerk read, involved the Comcast franchise agreement. I am not sure where we're at, in all honesty, in terms of where that contract is at, but if there are renewal discussions going on, we really need to be cognizant of the fact that there are, there are communities out there where their seniors get pretty good discounts. There's that ETP funding that they help the city out with that goes a long way toward helping the city provide, whether it's capital improvements or funding for educational programs and so on. So the ETP funding is important. And now, as we all know, hotspots are important, because, you know, data charges go up and up and up, and we're all using, we're all using data now, whether it's on our phones or our laptops. And, you know, I think that we should absolutely be talking to Comcast about making sure that we have sufficient numbers of hotspots so that people don't have to go into their data charges, that we can use Wi-Fi around the city. It's something that's happening in every large community, and there's no reason why as we go forward and start renegotiating our franchise agreement with Comcast, that these, all these matters shouldn't be taken into consideration. So hopefully, the council will approve the motion, and, and we'll get, you know, some feedback from the mayor's office as to where we're at with those. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor update the city council on repairs that have been done, scheduled to be done, and projects that need to be done as a result of the tornado damage in 2014. Also, that an air quality test be done in City Hall, especially in areas close to the auditorium where reports of potential mold have been made. Further, that a detailed accounting of all spending on such repairs, including payments made from insurance companies and taxpayer dollars, be disclosed to the city council within 30 days.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President, and, and thank you, Madam President, for having the confidence in me to lead the Ways and Means Committee, and I, I want to make sure that, you know, as chairman of that committee, and we as counselors, you know, take an active role in, in protecting and accounting for all taxpayer dollars that are spent and any other monies that come to the city by way of either grants or, in this case, insurance, insurance funding. This is going back now a few years ago, and I remember we had at the time architects in here that were going to provide the city three different options, because City Hall, as you can see, needs work. Now, it comes down to finances and what we can get done for how much money. There's Plan A that would have been bare necessities, we need to fix these things in order for City Hall to run efficiently and effectively and to protect the health of our employees. Option two would have been an upgrade from there, and option three would have been a full-blown renovation. I've never seen a document or any documents that have ever laid out any of those options, so I'm not sure what repairs have been done. I do remember back at that time that the roof was in serious bad shape, and really that we needed, you know, to, to at least, at bare minimum, if not replace the roof, make significant repairs to it. I'm not sure if those have been done and how much it might have cost. The auditorium, I'm told, and again, I don't have any evidence of this, which is why I put the motion in, that there could be potential mold there, and, and, you know, we as elected leaders not only have to represent the taxpayers, but we've got to be concerned about our own employees that work here in the building or, you know, the public that comes in to visit the building. We need to make sure that it's a healthy building and that air quality is good. So I'd like to, to get a quick response on this if at all possible, and, and then we can, you know, once we get those numbers, I'd like to put it into Ways and Means and have a committee meeting on it and see exactly what, what needs to be done, what has been done, and, you know, at what cost. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors?
On the motion.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor update the city council to the status of the DPW packer that has left the sanitation department with only pickup trucks to remove trash since June of 2017. Further, that the mayor update the city council as to the status of a heavy-duty DPW plow truck that has been sitting idle in New Hampshire since September for an $800 discrepancy on a $10,000 repair job. It is leaving the city without a valuable piece of equipment during times of peak snowfall.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just think the DPW needs some leadership here. They need, not leadership within the department, leadership from City Hall. The, you know, they're doing the best they can with the equipment that they have, and to have the sanitation crew out there using pickup trucks is a disgrace, especially when we have a new packer. Apparently, the new packer, the new, the new small trash truck is what I referred to, you know, when I talk about a packer. The new small trash truck apparently came in, it was new, it was desperately needed, and I, I'm really happy that, I'm happy for them that they had the equipment that they need to do the job that they're tasked with. The problem is, that truck had all kinds of problems from the very beginning, a brand-new truck. That's disappeared, and now they're asking our DPW crews to go around with pickup trucks and empty trash. It's just, it's unconscionable that months and months can go by without, without, without any kind of answer as to why that's happening. We also have a heavy piece of equipment here in the middle of the wintertime that needed a $10,000 repair. Apparently, for some reason, they had to send it up to New Hampshire to be repaired, which in and of itself, I don't understand why, but it was sent to New Hampshire to be repaired, a brand, again, a new truck that can put a heavy-duty plow blade on it when needed in the middle of winter. Apparently, they had budgeted or set aside $10,000 for the repair. The repair actually came to $10,800, and because of the $800 discrepancy, and the city hasn't come up with the money, the heavy piece of equipment that could be out serving our residents here in the middle of wintertime is sitting in New Hampshire over an $800 discrepancy. So I think that, you know, that needs to be addressed, and I'm asking the mayor to address that, because these are vital pieces of equipment that serve our residents. You know, Counselor Nowosowski put an excellent motion in, or, you know, Counsel, you know, when Counselor Nowosowski and Counselor Keith, I believe, put in motions on 3-1-1, or, you know, services from the Public Works Department, talking about, you know, servicing the public. But again, we need to give our, you know, men and women at the DPW the tools that they need in order to do the job. You know, if you want them to build a house, you've got to give them a hammer, you know? I mean, right now, we're asking them to pick up trash, we're asking them to plow snow, and we're not giving them those tools. So while we may have spent some money, and rightfully so, we should be spending money in capital improvements to constantly upgrade all of our, all of our equipment and vehicles and so on and so forth in all departments. Here's two pieces of equipment that should be out servicing the residents that are essentially useless for the last close to six months or more. So hopefully, we'll get a response from the mayor's office on that. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, that was combined back with calendar item number seven. Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Nowosowski that the mayor request the Emergency Management Director to request emergency space heaters and pumps through UASI to help benefit the residents in the city of Revere in emergency situations.
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, during my issue I had that I talked about last week, I thought, gee, why couldn't I just call someone in the city, in emergency departments, and get heaters? Or, in Counselor McKenna's case, they needed pumps down, down the lower end of Beauchamp, and they couldn't get those from the city. I know many years ago, we used to have that program, where the civil defense back then, back in 1978 time, I know some of you weren't born then, but back then, we had pumps that we could give people on an emergency. We had heaters that we can give people on emergency. Now, I'm not saying we just buy them and do it. I know, I did speak to the police chief, and I did speak to the fire chief. Police chief said, "Yeah, we can possibly get the money from URC." And then I talked to the fire chief, and he said, "It's a great idea, but I'm a little concerned about how we're going to control the giving them out and getting them back, and having people signing for them, and where they're going to store them." And one of my solutions is, well, we store so many at each fire station, at each firehouse in the city. So every part of the city has some kind of local activity. If they need a few more, they borrow it from another area that's not being used. And this isn't just in an emergency situation where we have a snowstorm or a hurricane. People lose their heat on a, just pay, losing their boiler, whether it's during the spring, if they have hot water, they need something during the summertime or the fall. Same thing with pumps. They have floods, their hot water heater goes, and they need a pump for their house. Borrow it from the city. Let the city have that potential of helping our folks in need, whether it be the regular folks or our senior citizens, especially our senior citizens. They're the most vulnerable because they don't know who to call. So I think this is something where we, we should go. I think we can talk about it, whether in Public Works or in Public Safety, but I, I think, I would like to see this motion go forward and let the two chiefs and the mayor come back with some kind of response, and then we can put it in committee and talk about it then. Thank you.
Sounds good. Counselor Tondo.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Counselor Nowosowski, I think this is a great motion, number one. Number two, would you be remiss if we added fans into it? Because, you know, like, we have people that, if they lose their air conditioning, you know?
That's a great idea.
Something of that nature, hot, cold. I, I think this is great. More importantly, God forbid if, and I don't mean to, you know, make the point, but there are some of us that had to have, you know, space heaters because they lost heat and so forth, and if someone ever gets displaced and they end up down at the, I don't know, the gym, you know, the gym is in- you know, the gym isn't exactly one place for an old person who's on cooderm, and these space heaters would really come in handy for these poor people. So I'm 100% behind this, and the quicker we can get this done, the better off we're going to be.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors wanting to speak? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo that a Suffolk Downs zoning impact advisory committee and a zoning mitigation committee of 12 separate members for each board be established. These two separated committees are to be comprised of a member of the Fire Department, Police Department, DPW, School Department, City Council, and seven members of the community.
Councillor.
Thank you. Again, this is very similar to the historical aid in Boston, in which with this huge project taking place over at Suffolk Downs, we're going to need public input. We're going to need experts from our police, our EMS, and our school system to find out what the impacts are of such a project. You know, we're going to have housing there, what type of housing, what needs are we going to have in the sense of educating children that are possibly going to be coming out of this project. And the other aspects of it is, is how's it going to impact our infrastructure and our response times? And what is it that we can do to mitigate it? And the other part, the most important part, is to use this group to actually engage the public, to speak to them and hear what their needs are, hear what their fears are, and kind of act as a conduit between our community and the mayor. And at the end of the day, this would respond back to the mayor, who I believe is going to set up a separate group as well. And I think that by having more than one group, you know, basically educate the people as long as we're all on the same page, it's a benefit. And I think the council needs to actually take a stand on this, because for the most part, we're locked out of information. You know what I mean? We're locked up, I hate to say it like this, but we're locked up by the mayor's office sometimes, but we get things a week later or what have you. And I think at this point, you know, we need to really, you know, separate ourselves in that aspect in order to ensure that we have some type of connectivity with the developer and, more importantly, act as a conduit to our constituency. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors have any questions? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Madam President, I think I point to personal privilege.
State your point, councillor.
Thank you. And Joanne, please chime in as well as Stephen. Over the weekend, I was coming home and seen Stephen, Councillor Marbido, hanging around dunking donuts. I thought he was, you know, just there for eating donuts and coffee, and sure enough, there was a family that got displaced from their apartment. And at first, it was just, you know, 13 people from the third floor. I realized it was 46 people. And I was like, wow, this is just one house, 46 people. Now, let's forget about that issue there, with the enormity of the amount of people and so forth, but just the issue of that, when I asked someone to stand up, I had been told that there was a need and so forth, and Stephen, myself, and other people were, you know, thinking red cross. And then I remember what Joanne McKenna said to me about a local businessman who said, "Well, you didn't call me first." So I got on the phone to call Matt Filbin, and he was willing to put all 46 people in his hotel. He said, "Let me check and see what we can do." Now, whether he had the room or not, he was willing to take in all 46 people. You know, that deserves a lot of accolades, as far as I'm concerned. And so I'm probably going to send a recommendation for some type of certificate, if I thought that was really nice. Thank you.
I think it's a great point, councillor, and I know Councillor McKenna will attest to that. That's not the first time he's done it for our city, so we're lucky to have business owners that are so willing to help people in need in our community. Any other councillors? Councillor McKenna? Someone give her a mic. Come on, Steve, share.
I would just like to add to that and name Jamie Russo, because Jamie Russo had called me during the flood and asked if I could, if he could put people up, but he only had one-room microunits and with no furniture, and I had a family of four that really needed somewhere to go. So I just would like to commend him too, because he did reach out to me and say, you know, "If you need anything, I'll help you." So...
That's great.
These are two construction, you know, guys in our city that are willing to help and do whatever they can for people in need, so. Thank you.
Great guys.
This city council will be adjourned until February 5th at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good one.